All right. It's hard to hear, so we're gonna have to... Okay. All right. So can I get someone to make a motion to agree to the... Accept the agenda?
We'll move.
Thank you. Thank you. All those in favor of the agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Oh, and Bill. Sorry. I'll try and point it out if I can.
I can hear you.
I know. I'm loud. It's my superpower. Okay. So we've already done the tour of the Lothrup School, so we're gonna move on to communications with parents, citizens, and staff. So is there anyone here who would like to talk to us? Would you wanna talk?
Lynn would like to talk to us.
Lynn would like to talk to us. Well, hello. What would you like to tell us?
Who's going?
I might be able to come here.
Sure.
Sure. Stand up if you don't mind, and then your full name?
Sure. Leonard Schmidt. I'm a resident of London.
Okay.
And I guess the short version is that I spoke with the Eric DeWilly about the career talk-up committee meeting about a proposal to work with the talk-up committee to identify a small handful of trees on the program that would look appropriate for harvesting to produce some lumber for the upcoming renovation, food, paper, and addition renovations. With kind of the giant emphasis of all of that being how can we produce something that is lasting education there to the town.
Okay. All right. Anything to add?
Yeah. Lynn works up at Hanaford Career Center and is also connected to Stafford folks. And the notion is that as much as possible would be to have students involved in the process of, you know, working with a forester, identifying the trees, getting a logger probably to donate their time, hopefully, and get the logs harvested, bring them to a site like the high school, bring in a portable sawmill, do that part of the process, sticker the lumber, dry it, and then eventually it goes to the library for some of the projects of the renovation that's gonna be taking place in the near future there. So the ask technically is one of the board just giving permission that we can go ahead and with that process. And most of the details would be worked out on a school-based level in terms of how it would network, what are the options? How would it network with the...
Muslammoo?
With the Muslammoo program? How would it network with the heavy equipment programs that were started last year, you know, so the kids get exposed to some of the equipment that's used and all that?
Bill?
Lenny, do you still have an active administrator certificate?
I do.
Good.
So my only question is, is that you need board approval to harvest the wood. However, there is a management program, correct? Or a management, lumber management or whatever, forestry management? There we go. That's what I'm trying to think of.
Yes. There is a timber management plan component to the management plan that is currently out of date. It needs to be revised every 10 years. It's a couple of years overdue for having a forester come in and walk the property, give recommendations, or if we have questions about what's going on with the property, are we having invasive species to look at? We have... I don't hear anybody. There's nobody that's really looking at timber harvesting other than for five or four trees. So we're not really looking at, I think...
These must be really big trees. I mean, how much lumber can you get out of a...
We're talking about doing something that is able to have something in the library that we can say this came from.
Okay.
Yeah.
Like a bookshelf or something?
Okay. Well, right. Well, so something for inside the library or...
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. We're not building the library.
So it could be as small as, you know, a few tables or chairs, or as much as, you know, some of the checkout counter, or some of the... Some of the bookcases are not going to be part of the kind of the general bid contractor package and will be more custom handled by the library. So, you know, some of those smaller aspects of the construction project.
And so what's the timeline? Like... I assume it needs to be done right off?
This year.
Okay.
Yes.
What I shared with Hawk Hill was fall of 2022 to meet with the forester, meet with the contractor for the library construction, and that may just be with library personnel at this point, because I don't think the contractors can select it, and get a sense of what timber makes sense to cut and how does that match with what the library could use. Winter of this year to have, whether it's Otter Valley heavy equipment, Stafford students, Hanaford students, or an outside contractor, get the half dozen trees on the ground and roadside. Spring of next year to mill the logs into lumber. Summer of next year to dry them. And then fall, autumn, 23, to deliver to the contractors.
Okay. Yes, Devin?
Have you talked to the library committee about it? Are they interested in doing this?
I've talked with David Robertson, with Molly. I haven't gone deeper than that.
But they are interested in doing this? It's fantastic idea. I just wondered if you'd...
Yeah. They're very excited about the possibility.
Sorry, I'm shutting off my phone. Okay. So normally, we don't take any action at this particular point of the meeting. So however, I'm willing to make an exception if people are willing to wanna take a vote and see if this is something that we really wanna do.
Do you want a motion? I'm sorry.
So I'm looking for a motion. Yeah. Go ahead.
I'll make a motion that we adjust our agenda?
No, no. I'm just asking for a motion of, do you wanna do this? Yeah.
Yes. I move that the board supports this activity.
Okay. Is there a second? Okay. Discussion? It was Brett, actually. Sorry. Yeah. Is there any discussion?
My only concern is that we have a plan in place. I mean, you guys have a kind of sketched-out plan, but I think we need more detail, like who's this forester that's gonna be able to go in there and look at it and make that decision? Do we have somebody lined up for that? Do we have a logger lined up? It almost seems like we need to have that.
Well, those things, those are all details that need to be worked out that are not Hawk Hill responsibility. They're gonna be the responsibility of school-based administration.
Will you at least give us an update each month as to where we are in that? Because Hawk Hill should at least know what's going on with that, since it is the property.
Yeah.
Okay. Jeremy?
Do you anticipate there's gonna be kind of budget needs for this project, or is it not gonna cost anything?
I don't see that being a concern.
No. I don't see that.
I think they're looking for mainly people who...
Well, we're donating an asset.
Yeah, donating help.
Yeah. We'll be able to get volunteer forester. Pretty sure we can get a logger. I mean, I can't speak for them at this point in time, but these ideas are... Have been percolating here for a little while this summer, so they're already out there for ideas and people. Lynn hasn't seen any roadblocks to that yet.
Lori, with your request of getting updates, I would love to have that include the student involvement piece. How are they being involved?
Yeah.
And even that culmination of perhaps they're gifting whatever it is to the library in some sort of event for that and things.
Sure. Yeah. That makes sense. Absolutely makes sense.
One additional comment was at the last Hawk Hill meeting, the Land Trust, the Mount Land Trust representative for this region that we work with was at the Hawk Hill meeting. We didn't have a quorum, so we weren't able to make our own decisions about that. So bringing it forward to the board to move faster on it. But Pam Burlingame is the representative of the Land Trust, and she was very supportive of the idea. And that was one of the factors that we have to touch base with the Land Trust on things like this as well.
I think my only issue... One second. My only issue is that if you get to a point where you get stuck, I would wanna make sure that you came back to the board, you know, and that we know exactly what's happening as far as... I would love to see mostly our students. I realize that Hanaford kids and stuff might wanna be involved, but it is Muslammoo program, and I would hope that our kids would do most of the stuff.
To kind of clarify that, I was thinking of Hanaford or Stafford simply in terms of somebody with a chainsaw to put the trees on the ground, and my first choice would be a student. But if for some reason neither of those programs come through, then I could look at somebody else.
The forestry program at Stafford has a milling machine too, I believe.
Yeah.
Okay.
Which we might be able to engage with on-site. I don't know. But those are things that get played out between, you know, between the schools or between others. I don't wanna get lost in the weeds here of us trying to figure out all of those details. It's a great concept, and it's something that I wanna support us going forward.
I think it's good as a preliminary plan. I think as before trees go on the ground or whatever, I'd like to know what the exact process is going to be.
Yeah. And that we have the volunteers we need, because as we've pointed out, you know, do we have money in a budget for something like this anyway?
Right.
And so if it's gonna cost us money, we should know about that before the trees are...
Before it happens.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
Well, I was always, I was thinking too that Devin is our... That's his name, the tech.
Devin Carver, yeah.
I am thinking too, I don't want... Has he been a part of this plan? Does he know about all of this? Or is he not? He's not really?
Devin, I don't believe... I mean, he may be aware of it, but he's... His plate is really full.
Oh, so you're thinking of using other resources in Muslammoo and, okay, not our technical program?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah. It's a real collaborative concept of using community resources and the school for the benefit of the Brandon Free Public Library. It's a win-win all the way around, I would think. We're trying to make it happen that way.
Okay. Any other discussion?
You say students are gonna be involved?
Potentially, yes.
Does this mean it becomes a school activity and we have to go through supervision, licensing issues?
That would be an administrative decision. I mean, that's not my call.
So I would assume that if we were to ask students to get involved in the Muslammoo program specifically, that Josh would know exactly what needs to happen in order to allow our kids to be a part of it, and that our principal would too, and our superintendent?
Somebody needs to check it out, make sure we're nodding the i's and crossing the t's.
Sure. Okay.
Josh did feel that the Muslammoo program would be able to participate in some project like this. He was cautious when we were talking about archaeology and developing more of an archaeology in the schools program for that property, and Josh called timeout, very reasonably so, saying this is not the year to try and do new program development. And that's a message throughout the school. They're just getting their act together after COVID and stuff. But he did say that this type of a project is... Has got a clear beginning, clear ends, and clear activities, and it's very doable. And he was willing to participate in that.
Okay.
Have to be careful in terms of adding programs that would set precedence for other people asking for other kinds of programs that could come along.
Sure. Okay.
All we need to be...
Okay. All right. Everybody ready to vote? Okay. So the motion on the table is to start the process of looking at how the Muslammoo property could provide a few trees to...
Public library.
The public library and Brandon.
Hawk Hill.
Hawk Hill. Yeah. So, all right. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. It looks like everybody online said yes. Okay. Motion passes. Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you. Can I be approved if I bail out?
Nope. But we appreciate it.
All right. I'll stay in touch with you.
All right. So the next thing on our agenda is the presentation of Cavali Land feasibility study, and I believe we are here with Casey from NBF. And Brenda, if you would like to do the introductions, that would be fine.
Great. Thanks. Can you guys hear me all right?
Yes.
Yes.
So we have been fortunate to partner with NBF Architects for a couple of decades now, and over the last six or seven years, we've had the pleasure of working with Casey. So Casey has been helping us as we proposed a project in 2018, I think you may remember, for some renovations at Nashaby, Otter Valley, and Lothrup, in a bond vote that failed. And she's also helped us in looking at middle school models and what those... What options we might have and what scenarios make a lot of sense or don't make sense, kind of both looking into whether it's a good idea or not the greatest idea, you know, just really investigating what our options are. And last May, the board asked us, actually, I think it was last February, the board asked us to look at the Cavali Land, where we own about 44 acres, and see what that might look like for a middle school model and new construction. And so we went to our trusted architect, and Casey, you know, has visited the site and done a preliminary feasibility analysis that she is ready to share. I think also included in the package, because I had anticipated, or we had anticipated, you might then ask, well, what was... Because we do have new board members now and new administration, what was the previous middle school study that we had done at Otter Valley Union High School campus property? And we had looked at two different options there as well, and I think that was included in your report. But the one that she's really gonna talk about today is the Cavali Land. So Casey, welcome. Thank you for joining us.
Yes. Hello, everybody, and thank you for having me. If I'm talking too fast or the volume needs to be adjusted, please just let me know, or let me know if I have to repeat anything if the audio is going in and out. But otherwise, I'm going to dive into things. As Brenda mentioned, my company has been involved with the school district for a little while now, over the years, many different projects. But specifically regarding the middle school and addressing some sort of overpopulation in the buildings, was that 2018 bond vote that dealt with Nashaby School, Lothrup, and I believe also the Otter Valley School. It was prior to working on the main entrance addition. In 2019, we did provide the report regarding the two methods, one being a super school, where additional space was going to be investigated to be added to the existing middle and high school at Otter Valley in order to create more space for the middle school functions. Method two was referred to as a super campus, and that was creating a separate standalone middle school on the south portion of the current property where the Otter Valley Middle and High School currently is. And as Brenda mentioned already, that report should have been provided as part of this meeting, so I won't go into that in too far detail. So we'll talk a little bit more about Cavali Road here. Before getting into the detail regarding this report, I'd like to start by reminding everyone that the concept explained is a preliminary idea that will require further investigation to determine the full extent of the work that would be required. It's basically intended to provide insight and just start a dialogue so that we can consider and discuss pros and cons of the project and how it has effects on the other buildings within your school district. So the property under consideration is located on Cavali Road in Pittsford. It's 37.5 acres. The neighboring properties along the west boundary are residential buildings. There is also the town, Pittsford Town Office. The majority of the neighboring properties to the north and east are owned by the town. Cavali Road ends at the Pittsford Haunted House, and surrounding that is the town's recreational area, which consists of wooded area abutting the property. There is one residential lot at the corner of Cavali Road, and Plains Road, and properties to the south are also residential. The lot is in the rural zoning district. Regulations include a front setback of 40 feet, side setback of 25 feet, and a rear setback of 25 feet. The building would be limited to a maximum height of 40 feet, and the maximum lot coverage is 20%, which would equal seven and a half acres, or approximately 326,700 square feet. For reference, the footprint of the existing Otter Valley Union Middle and High School is approximately 62,200 square feet. As part of this report, I did do a very initial preliminary site plan that took the footprint of the Otter Valley School and put it on the Cavali Road site so that you can have an idea of the proportions of the building to what space is available. I had also created like a football field and a baseball field just to give you a visual understanding of the property. So the proposed middle school would include sixth, seventh, and eighth grade students. Each grade is anticipated to have approximately 120 students. This number, along with a list of desired classrooms for the building, was used to determine potential calculations for the potential size of the school. A list of rooms and square footages is provided in the report, and you'll see that the preliminary total is approximately 55,000 square feet. This number included an allowance for support spaces such as halls, bathrooms, and mechanical spaces, but needs to be further evaluated once an exact number of offices, teacher rooms, meeting spaces, and similar functions are finalized. So for a general overview of general advantages for using this approach, one being the property is already owned by the school district, the roads at Edend Street resulting in less traffic passing by the actual school. All middle school grades would be located in their own building. There is also a potential positive effect on elementary buildings and the high schools since they are currently congested due to large or increasing student population. Some of the general disadvantages for this property and approach is the cost of constructing a new building, sport fields, associated site work and permitting requirements that are needed, a potential negative effect on elementary schools that already have a small or decreasing student population, additional bus routes and scheduling coordination that would be needed by adding another building to your district, traffic considerations regarding the intersection between Plains Road and Route 7, increased traffic to Plains Road due to particularly drop-off, pickup, and school functions in the after hours, the irregular shape of the lot and the location of the power lines, poles, and rightaways that limit the use and layout of the property, the amount of tree removal that would be required on the lots. There is the potential for negative feedback from neighboring properties, just who might be concerned about noise, privacy, and traffic. And you also will need to maintain access through the property for the Pittsford Haunted House, though it is in a, you know, busy, smitty timeframe. One of the main concerns I see with the property is the limitations created by the existing power lines running through it. If the idea of constructing a middle school on Cavali Road is of interest to the school board, I think the next step should be having Green Mountain Power investigate whether these existing power lines and poles can be relocated. Personally, I think if the lines had to stay where they are, it doesn't make the site really worth further consideration, in my opinion, just because it is right through the middle of the space, and you cannot have any sort of built structure, sports field, or permanent, you know, structure in that location. The other major unknowns for this project would be going through the Act 250 process, just because they might have some restrictions for, you know, water use and runoff and how much you clear and that sort of stuff. Also, the community's reaction to the project, particularly the reaction of the neighboring properties. As mentioned, they might be concerned about increased traffic coming onto Plains Road, just, you know, privacy that they would be losing by having a school there after function, just the noise created by maybe some of the sport events. One of the biggest factors in considering a project like this is always the cost. Yesterday, I discussed the general concept with one of the contractors and a third party, clerk of the works that I'm currently working on a large project with. Both of these people felt that an appropriate number to budget at this point would be around $500 a square foot. So at 55,000 square feet for this building, that puts the project at approximately $28 million. One other thing that should be considered and discussed is the effect this project would have on the other school buildings in the district. For instance, the new middle school will relocate some of the students and help provide space in other buildings. However, it may not be enough to satisfy the needs of other schools that are currently overpopulated, particularly thinking Nashaby and Lester. So for a high cost of a project, you might not actually be fulfilling all of the things that these buildings need. In addition to this project, need additional projects at those properties. So in closing, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to be a part of this discussion, the opportunity to work with the school district over the years. If there are any initial questions or comments, I can try to answer them at this time, or I can at least investigate them further after the meeting.
Are there any questions?
Brenda, is there anything you might wanna add regarding population within the school buildings, or just projected population?
Sure. So just to remind you, and I think Kristin shared the projected populations with you and the class sizes last week, last meeting, in regards to kind of laying out what we're looking at for the budget environment. I think throughout all of our schools, our... We've seen our enrollments kind of go up and down, and I think we're pretty level right now. We are, however, seeing increases at both Nashaby and Otter Creek Academy at Lester. And as Casey mentioned, this proposal, any middle school proposal, would move six classrooms, three per grade, fifth and sixth, out of Nashaby. So that would add a lot of space that they are currently suffering without. It would make them perfectly comfortable, perhaps, but not certainly lavish in space. And moving fifth and sixth would do really nothing to change the layout and the space constraints at Otter Creek Academy at Lester. And moving four grades out of Lothrup would make the school, you know, even smaller. So when you were remembering, if you were remembering, looking at their ratios last time, they were kind of on the cusp for everything as to whether they needed one class or two class. Moving those two grades out would lower the numbers, obviously, you know, just making their Unified Arts and additional classes just much, much smaller than having all those grades in there.
Thanks, Brenda. Questions? Jen?
In the report, it referenced six through eight. Brenda, you were saying fifth and sixth. Are you just saying classes would be... Classrooms would be restructured, or was that just...
So I will... I'll mention that in our original discussion of the middle school model, we were talking five through eight, three years ago. So...
It's six through eight.
But you're only saying six through eight.
Six through eight.
Okay. All right. Okay.
I'm sorry. That was my error. We are thinking sixth grade, so only three classes at Nashaby. You know, right now, OCA is combined by six, so it wouldn't reduce any classes at OCA and two classes at Lothrup. I'm sorry.
It's okay. Okay. Yes, Devin?
What was the size of the super campus building?
It's the same size as it's always been. It's the same size as it's always been. We were going up and maybe a little bit out, but not very.
Super Campus was a brand-new building out on the sports field?
No, the Super Campus was the campus that we currently have.
Yeah, Super Campus is building on top of Otter Valley.
On top of Otter Valley.
Oh, my.
I thought that was the Super School.
Wait a minute. No.
I thought the Super Campus was like having multiple buildings.
That's Super School. Super School.
So, the original Super Campus, or this?
Yes. So, Super School was building on the one-story additions at the current Otter Valley Middle and High School. So, that is still, again, limited to the amount of space you have as a one-story, just because you have the vehicle circulation around the building currently. You would have to, you know, introduce some new structures to support that, and there would be some investigation there. The Super Campus that was presented in 2019 was looking at creating a standalone middle school on the south end of the current Otter Valley Middle and High School property. That school would likely be a very similar size to what we're looking at here, because, again, we were discussing complete, separate functions. So, they would still need a separate gymnasium, cafeteria, all, you know, library, and all those extra spaces. So, I would say that the square footages we're coming up with currently would be similar to what you would be seeing there. It would just be at a different location.
Thank you. That was a question I, that was the answer I was looking for. Thank you.
Before I get back to Jen, anybody else? Bill?
The land that's on the map there, is that all of the contiguous land that might be available to us? It's sort of unusual shape there.
On which one? Which, are you talking of the Cavali land, or are you talking?
Yes, Cavali.
So, on the Cavali land, you want to know?
How much contiguous land is available to us, and is it desirable layout? And will the drop-off in the back pose an obstacle if we were to build on it?
Okay. Casey, were you able to hear his question? Okay. So, his question, that's okay. So, his question is about the Cavali property. You want to know if that's the, if the property is contiguous that we own, which I believe it is?
What we own plus what could potentially be available to us through the town, or?
Oh, you want to know if we, if there's any potential land that we could get from the town to add on to this? Okay. I don't know that answer. I don't know that she would either. So...
I do not know if there's anything connecting to the current Cavali property that can be, you know, swapped with the town or gained from the town. I believe there had been an agreement that the portion that is the Haunted House was given to the town in a swap, and Brenda might have some information on that.
And then, what was, there was another part to your question, too?
The drop-off on the back of the property, does that get in the way of being usable for putting the building there?
So, the drop-off in the back of the building, does that cause an issue for putting the building there?
Are you talking about the drop-off that's currently shown on the preliminary site plan for Cavali?
Yes.
So, the preliminary site plan is just strictly for a visual aid. I wouldn't get caught up on the actual layout of the land or anything. That is the exact footprint and vehicle traffic that is currently on the Otter Valley Middle and High School lot, and it's being provided just so that you could see how something of size that is visual currently would fit on that lot. I'm not necessarily proposing that that is the best approach. It is just more for a visual aid when discussing square footages and sizes.
Okay.
So, there is an opportunity to move the building in a different location. One of the things I did mention, too, is I think it would be important, if this concept is still of interest and, you know, budget works, which we've been doing for a couple of years, to reach out to Green Mountain Power to find out if we can move the power lines. Just because if we can relocate them closer to maybe to access road to the Haunted House, or even on the north side of the property where you just have that little strip of land, that will open up a lot more opportunity in the actual buildable portion of the Cavali lot. And then, you'll be able to adjust the building, have more space for sports fields, more space for parking. I think if the power lines stay where they currently are, is where you're going to run into a lot of limitations that make the site a little less desirable.
Jen?
I answered my own question.
Well, that's lovely. Do you want to share it with us?
I was trying to gain like spatial awareness of where things were.
Okay. Other questions for Casey? So, in your estimation, at this point, based on what you've seen, what would your, what, in your professional opinion, would we be better off to continue looking at Cavali, or would we be better off to be looking at one of the options that we were looking at prior to COVID at Otter Valley?
That's a good question. In my professional opinion, I think it would be a reasonable decision to proceed with investigating with Green Mountain Power to find out what would be needed to move the power lines, and if there is a cost associated with that, if they're willing to have any sort of agreement, being that it's with the town or the school, or if they would want you to front the cost for that, so that we can at least put a number to it. Because like I said, if we can't move the power lines, I don't think it's worth investigating any further, based on just what I'm seeing from sizes. So, I think it is worth at least having that discussion with Green Mountain Power before closing the door on the Cavali property. If, between the two super campus concepts, you know, building a new standalone middle school on the south end of the lot at Otter Valley and Cavali, initial reaction would be, if you're already making the separate building, it might be nice to put it on the Cavali lot. I think if we were to consider the Otter Valley property, well, the Otter Valley Middle and High School current property, there might want to be consideration to relocating a sport field, so that the addition can be connected to the existing school, so that you can try to share some of the functions. It just seems like there would be a lot of cost put into creating two gymnasiums, two cafeterias, two libraries, to have two schools on the same property. It seems like there might be a way to, to, you know, expand the building by maybe modifying vehicle traffic, maybe modifying a sports field, in order to work better if you were to look at the Otter Valley Middle and High School site, if that makes sense.
Sure. It does. Thank you. Other questions? You have questions?
Oh.
Yes, sir.
Just for a, I know this is a bit ahead, but just for a timeline, how long would this whole process take to get to, say, we did choose one, maybe on campus, like building a new middle school, how long would that take to get there and complete?
So, there's a lot of things that would have to happen. You heard her talk about Act 250. We'd have to make sure that we had all the permits in process. We'd also have to make sure that our towns would agree to us borrowing money to build it, and that they would want us to actually build onto Otter Valley in order to do that. We'd have to do a big sell. So, this is not something that would happen next year. It's probably a good four, or five, six years down the line, if not longer.
You'll be paying taxes by the time you do it.
That's right, yeah.
And who knows what kind of technology will be available?
Right, yeah. So, okay. Any other questions for Casey?
I have a question related to this process that is not related to Casey, so I don't want to hold her up. I'm happy to hold that question.
I think it would be helpful that she hears whatever we have to say about it, so go ahead.
So, my question is why we're going through this process, to take it back a couple steps. I feel like I've been hearing conflicting information, and some of this seems like it's a carryover from when we first consolidated, and then there were all these issues with space and concerns about closing schools and not closing schools. So, there's that on one side, and then it sounds like there's a couple classrooms, it might be, or, well, schools that have not as much capacity as they want. And all the state information is saying we have like an increasingly aging population of decreasing numbers of students, and that's been a problem in the district. So, it seems like there's these two opposing things going on, where do we need to spend twenty-eight million dollars to, in five years, have a school that's empty, if we're already concerned about that? It seems like a bigger part of the problem we've had has been class size in some schools is not big enough, so there's combined classes, which then get too big. And then, it sounds like there's some schools where there's, they're just too small. But so, it almost feels like this idea of building this new school is coming out of a conversation, I think that happened a year after consolidation, so going back a ways, where I don't, I'm wondering if this is even necessary.
So, I'll tell you what I can tell you, and then you can jump in wherever you like. We started this process a year before COVID happened, because our, as you know, Nashaby is bursting at the seams, and still is, even today, and OCA actually is bursting at the seams, hence, we're bringing in those trailers. Lothrup has had issues with its enrollment, although I, we're starting to see them come back a little bit. So, as far as declining enrollment statewide, that is true, that declining enrollment is happening everywhere. Doesn't seem to be happening for us. If you looked at our numbers over the last six, seven years, they'd be pretty steady, up or down a couple. The reason for the middle school model at the time was because there is a middle school model program out there, that means our fifth through eighth graders, that's what we were talking about then, bringing them together, so that all of those teachers could work within that program together, and be collaborative, and have those kids together, so that they knew who they were. Instead of bringing in three classes of sixth graders into Otter Valley, all the Nashaby kids know one another. You've got a few OCA kids that, you know, aren't even in class together, so don't know anybody. And then, you have the Lothrup kids, that there's a good chunk of them, but they never really get to mesh together. But a lot of it had to do with academics, and that's why we were trying to figure out if we should be bringing them together, or if we should keep them at their elementary schools as they currently are. So, that's where this is coming from. When COVID hit, this went on the back burner, and it's coming back up, because we did buy two trailers that we really don't want, and, at least in my estimation. And we wanted to see if this was still good for kids. Is this a good move for kids?
Wasn't some of the rationale extracurriculars as well, and having another gymnasium, and having, for all of that, so that our, that our athletic capacity is limited, because we don't have those other spaces. And so, we have kids practicing before school and after school, which is great. But another sell of having the middle school campus was that we would have all, we would have another gymnasium for practices and games and events. And I think it's also the town that has the middle school, the rec department of that town has a whole nother asset that they get to collaborate with.
That is, that's part of it. So, I mean, but, I mean, that wasn't the driving forces to have another gymnasium just for rec sport.
I know.
We really do try to talk about academics first. Yes, Barbara?
And the, there was the, I was on it now, I can't think what it was called, the planning?
Oh, right. The, the task force.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
The task force, where it conducted community surveys, I believe.
Yep.
And I believe the prevailing opinion of feedback was that people wanted middle school, or that it was...
It was a better solution than any other solution. So, the task force, we, we asked the task force to come together to determine what was the best course of action for our kids, and so this was, this is what came out of that. And Greg, who has his hand up, could speak to that, so I'm going to let him go, and then...
I'll pull you on.
So, go ahead, Greg.
Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Yeah. I haven't been able to hear everybody. I can hear Lori very well.
Sorry. Zoom power.
So, I, I just wanted to give a little bit more, I know Lori did address a lot of the things Jeremy was asking. I could hear Jeremy. The task force was created in 2018 to create a five-to-ten-year vision for our district, and the middle school model became the focus of this task force. And the task force was combined with community members, as well as school board members, and we had a lot of outreach. We had different groups come in, and this was the idea that was created. And what, you know, I know we're talking about building in this other location today, but just, you know, to throw in to the disadvantages for Casey to put on the list, building at this site here would go against a lot of the thoughts a lot of the community had during our seeking of ideas. Everybody was really in consensus that if we're going to build something, it should be at Otter Valley, that it would be very difficult to convince the entire district to invest funds if it wasn't at that central location. We had, we had just come off of the bonds not passing, and one of the things we heard in the community was that spending a large sum of money not in a central location was going to be very difficult to convince the community. I do see that as a disadvantage to building there. So, however we move forward, I think it's great that we investigate this, by the way, but we should definitely keep the Otter Valley site alive, because a big part of this will be convincing the entire district. And so, we'll have to have more community meetings, really get the community involved in hearing what they want and where they want it. So, I just wanted to throw that out there.
Thanks, Greg. Derek?
No, I didn't.
Okay.
Oh, no. I was just itching my eye.
Don't do that. You could buy something. All right. Okay. Other questions? Did that answer your question, Jeremy?
Somewhat.
Okay. What parts did we not answer?
I guess I'm not seeing the, like, numbers of the necessity of it, which has been what I've seen on paper a lot, the discussion of the educational experience for students makes a lot of sense. I think it's great and agree with, like, having a more unified experience for the kids. I'm trying to weigh that against, is this really just because one or two classrooms in the district are overfilled, or is it because their schools are completely unworkable district-wide? It's like if it's just Nashaby that's bursting at the seams, maybe we just see about an addition on Nashaby. Just as an example, not that I'm like, oh, this is the thing to do, but if it's not a district-wide series of constraints, then it doesn't necessarily make sense to me to have, to change the schooling in the whole district, the physical location of the school in the whole district, especially to build now, when it's like the highest construction prices we could possibly find, and...
And like you said, it's way down the road, so hopefully by then, if we were going to do this...
But then, if our numbers are declining, or even staying steady, like, are we, it feels to me like everything I've seen, it'd be very unlikely that our numbers are going to increase, that they might stay steady, if anything. If it's working now, and we don't get any bigger, are there ways we can make it work better as-is?
Is it working now?
Well, the only thing I would say is, OCA and Nashaby are desperate for trailers, right? There are a lot of things that are, for instance, OCA has no functioning library. They have no functioning nurse space. Intervention is in the cafeteria. There's nowhere for kids to go when they come in in the morning for breakfast, so they have to hodgepodge. This class goes there, right? So, teachers don't get their prep, which is a whole other issue. Nashaby is pretty darn similar. No spaces for interventionists. You have five interventionists sharing one classroom, so not ideal. And to be honest, Otter Valley isn't much better off. So, Otter Valley, we talk about issues with, for instance, Devon's program and Josh's program. Part of that is because that was the only space for them to be in. So, Otter Valley, for a lot of reasons, is also bursting at the seams, so I'm, it is not my role to say, go A or go B, but I will tell you the space constraint is a real thing. And I will also say that if the, you know, if something else isn't figured out, the problem on our end as administrators is that we've been given the clear message, we don't want trailers long-term. So, I don't know... So I don't know what to do with a ton of kids if, if trailers aren't an option. So if it's not a middle school, then is there someplace else that we wanna build on, right? Do we wanna make kids go to Neshibi and build in Neshibi? Do we wanna bus kids in Lester all the way over to Lothrup, who happens to have plenty of space, by the way? So it's a delicate balance, but I will say that the struggle is not new, it's since 2018, OB, OCA, and Neshibi have had some space constraints.
I'm gonna let Greg go next, because I think he is going to say something that I know he's gonna say, so go ahead, Greg. Oh, we can't hear you.
I hope, I hope I'm gonna say what you're thinking, but, just to further answer what Jeremy was getting at, our, our decision on the middle school model wasn't just based on being reactive to these number issues, that was definitely gonna get solved by it, but the primary focus was trying to create a really great middle school experience. It felt like it was the part of our district that had been neglected for a long time, and it, there were some issues, the way our middle school is exactly right now, it's not perfect, it's not bad, but it's not, it's not something we can shine a light on to people outside our district and be like, come, look at our amazing middle school experience, the way Bennington created their middle school, or the way, you know, Middlebury created their middle school. It was just the area that needed attention to really make our district shine. So it's not just about being reactive to just class size. Was that what you were thinking, Lori?
I'll just add on to that by saying that the task force also looked at all of our other buildings to see if, like, adding on would make sense, and so it, it actually did not make sense. It made more sense to, to either build on to Otter Valley or do an, its own middle school. So I'm gonna go to Jen next, 'cause she was next and I butted in.
I was going to say, without being on the task force, some of what he said, and that, that, you know, maybe as a board, we could invite a professional and expert in that could speak to the developmental stages of our students and how sixth through eighth, they clash with elementary, and then they also aren't ready for being with the high school, and our superintendent is an expert, I'm sorry.
We, we did that box score, we did that, we did that presentation last year, we can certainly share it again.
Well, right, and they weren't here last year, so we have to remember, so. We, we have had that. All right, Barbara?
Well, that goes along with what I was gonna say, is that back in several years, maybe 2018, we had a, I think it was Jeff Lawrence and maybe Jim Avery?
Andy.
Or, no, Andy, that's it, Andy. They did a presentation on how sep- separate middle schools are best practice, considered best practices, and it's developmental, and they went through the whole...
See, I know more than just gyms.
She does, she knows a lot, so that is exactly what we...
We could bring that forward again at one of our meetings, is we could have our new director of curriculum and his, Tyler, and someone else that he'd wanna bring in, maybe the other specialist, and they could talk about why, you know, middle, why middle school model makes sense. So, or just to have it, you know, to have that understanding.
That was definitely a key component that evolved as the task force went on, was talking to the community, but also drawing on the best practice information.
Right. So, any other questions regarding this, yes, sir?
Maybe it's in here and I dismissed it. I, I see the proposal at Otter Valley would eliminate a field. Is that because of land restrictions there, or? I, I...
Well, yeah, so the middle, if the middle school model, if the, the actual middle school was to be put out in the South Field, it would be pretty much where that football field is, so you would lose the extra football field that they have out there. And if we added on to the side of Otter Valley, you'd probably lose the baseball field, and we'd have to put that somewhere else.
And is there any other land there that's available, or?
Not really, no. No, it's, it's marsh.
And that, and that far football field is used by brand and rec football and seventh and eighth grade football.
Yeah.
I would just point out that our main goal here should be academics.
Yes.
As much as I love football and baseball, you know, the academics come first, and I think that there's probably plenty of space out there to do both and, and work it out. The football field is not used nearly as much as people think, I guess.
Well, and I'm waiting to see if that land that's next to Otter Valley, that's to the north of it, ever, it's a cornfield right now, or usually is, that might become available at some point to us, maybe. So, okay, so at this time, I think the presentation, we're gonna, we'll bring this up again at some point, to talk about it again. I appreciate, Casey, that you're here to talk to us about the cavalry possibility, and now it's time for us to determine our next steps. So probably will not do that tonight, though, so, but thank you for your time.
My pleasure, and thank you again for the opportunity to be part of the discussion.
No problem, thank you.
Thank you, Kate.
Hi, everyone.
Okay. Let's see, so the next thing on our agenda is the assessment goals and snapshot review of our global ends monitoring report.
I would like to present, if you don't already know, this is Tyler, the director of the film production.
Good evening, as Kristen said, my name's Tyler, we've got Jimmy called up here, he's gonna sign on here in a minute. There's Jimmy. He's our data literacy coach, he lives and breathes data all day, every day. We didn't get him a plane ticket, I say it every time, he's in Louisville, Kentucky, and he is, I always say we're gonna give him a plane ticket one these days and bring him in, but not tonight. Anyways, what we're gonna present for you tonight is our Sback data from last year, and then also our Edmentum progress monitoring assessments that we do throughout the year. One thing I do wanna bring up to you before we jump into the data is that Sback, as we know it, is going away. I'm not sure if you've heard that or not yet, but Sback itself, the tests, that platform is now, is now gone in all of Vermont. Was replaced with a different company, it's called Cognia, it's very new to us, we honestly just got a notification of this from the state, maybe about three weeks ago, and then in their email to us, they had informed us that they were shooting for a midsummer launch of this, however, that got backed out for about three months, so, you know, we're really kind of just feeling it out right now. I do know the platform is, or the, the assessment windows are all gonna stay the same, it's gonna be the ELA math and science assessments for the same grades we've done in the past. The reasoning for the state is they believe that this platform, this company, has a more robust system of assessments with it, or interim assessments, and it's also a much better measure with equity. But we'll be rolling that out with our assessment coordinators per building more, starting about December, and we're gonna, that's our, basically our building principals, sorry, Debbie, you're just hearing about that right now, but our building principals will then work with their staff to get them trained and make sure that they're ready to go for the assessments, which start in the last two weeks of March, which will be the first ELA assessment. And then when we're talking about Edmentum, Jimmy will be here talking about that, and that is our progress monitoring assessments we do in grades three through, three through 10, and we do those three times a year, and we're just finishing up that window now, and the next one will be in January and then later in May. And basically we do that for, again, those students, then we also do it for grades 11 and 12 for at-risk students, or if a student, if a teacher wants to do that assessment to get an idea of where they are, we also do it for that as well. So with that, I'm gonna, do you have a question, Lori?
My only question is, so the Edmentum data that you're showing us tonight, is that the first one that they've, that they're finishing up right now, or is this last year's?
It's last year's.
Okay.
Yeah, it's last year's. And actually, Jimmy, did you jump into this year's? I can't remember.
Yeah, I, I got this year's so far, and then some historical data.
Yeah, because the window just closed last Friday, so we're very new, fresh on that data, so, yep. So anyways, I'm gonna turn it over to Jimmy, he's gonna dive into a lot of information for you. If you have any questions, just, you know, jump in, 'cause again, he can't really see you, but again, we also have questions at the end, if you have anything pops up.
And I just emailed all of you Jimmy's presentation.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Great.
Who's this, do you call company?
Hey. Cognia, C-O-G-N-I-A.
Sorry, I can't, I can't hear you all super well.
That's right.
Can you all hear me okay?
Go ahead, yep.
Okay, awesome. Well, hi, everyone, thanks for having me. I'm gonna, as Tyler said, talk about Sback and Edmentum. I realize that this is a, there's a lot of questions that could come up in this topic, so in addition to creating a relatively brief, I'm gonna shoot for 10 minutes, presentation, I developed a much more extensive report that is attached to this presentation, that if you're interested in going in greater depth, you can, you can certainly do so. So, kind of a bird's eye view of how our students did last year. This is all grades for spring of 2022. 16% of our students who tested were proficient in math, 24% in ELA, and 17% in science. The percentage of students who scored in the below category were around 50% for both math and ELA, and 37% for science. And I'm gonna focus just on math and ELA going forward in the presentation. So first off, I realize that this, this slide is not very aesthetically appealing, but we won't go through these numbers in depth. This just lays out by each grade level, the percentage that tested proficient, and the percentage that tested below, as well as the, the percentage point difference in the score between students on free and reduced lunch and students not on free and reduced lunch. So basically, the general trend for, this is math, the next slide is, is ELA, the general trend is very similar for both. Last year, in the higher grades, a lower percentage of students tested proficient, and a higher percentage of students tested in the below category, and the, and the lower grades, you know, it was somewhat higher proficient and somewhat lower in the below category. The magnitude of the discrepancy in, in percentage proficient and percentage below between free and reduced lunch, kids on free and reduced lunch and kids not on free and reduced lunch, it varied by grade level, but on the whole, it, it's a significant disparity that deserves our attention. In, in the previous year, if my memory serves, there was a request for looking at some cohort data, so the best, the best way, I think, to do that is to look at average score, because it's a, it's a, it's a continuous score rather than proficiency, where the, the cut score for proficiency varies by grade level. So I've only chosen to include one of the three cohorts that I investigated in this presentation for the sake of time, but this, the, the patterns are similar enough that this will give you an idea. So you can see, OBU is in the, in the orange, the first test represented is third graders in spring of 2018, the final test were, they were seventh graders last year, current eighth graders. So you can see that, and this is ELA, you can see that our average score was below the states, as well as this kind of gray line, or these gray squares are the proficiency minimum benchmark. So you can see that the average score decreased in the most recent testing year, and that it has been lower than the state average for all of the years considered. And then in math, we started out much more similar to the state in spring 2018 and spring 2019, this is the same cohort, and you can see that in the last two testing years, our average score dipped below the state's average, and was also significantly lower than the proficiency benchmarks for the relevant grade levels. So some, some takeaways from this testing year, or this most recent testing year. So first off, there was a high level of test completion among the elementary schools. I don't have the exact numbers in front of me, but my understanding, my memory is that each of the elementary schools hit that 95% benchmark that we want them to hit or above. Otter Valley didn't quite get there, but the last number that I know about is eight, around 85%, but Kristen or Tyler might have, have the final number, I could, I couldn't locate it in time. But I, even though that, even though we didn't quite get there, the reasons for that were due to chronic absenteeism and behavioral issues around testing, and the interventionists at Otter Valley were tapped in and really made a valiant effort to get the completion rate up, so they deserve a kudos, even though we didn't quite get there. So as I kind of alluded to, for both math and ELA, across all grades, there was a lower percentage of OBU students scoring proficient and above in the state, and a higher percentage across all grade levels of students scoring in the below category for the state. I've already mentioned the, the consistent gap by reduced lunch status, I've got an example here that I'm not going to click on, if there are time, if there's time for questions, I, I don't know that there will be, we can refer to that if need be. In addition to looking at the most recent testing year, I also looked at kind of historical trends, and not just in terms of a cohort, but in terms of how a particular grade level performs over time. So fourth grade in 2018, a different group of fourth graders in 2019, and so on. So there's a very consistent trend for both OBU and also for the state, that over time, a particular grade level is trending downward in terms of the percentage of students in the proficient category, and trending upward in the percentage of students in the below category. So this is a statewide problem, likely a national problem, of, as each year goes by, fewer students are testing proficient in, in the same grade level. Across most grade levels, there were a lower percentage of OBU students who are scoring proficient and above as compared to the state, but the gap was generally much more significant in the upper grades. So the, the pattern is, the pattern of a discrepancy between OBU and state scores is, is much more significant in seventh, eighth, and ninth grades than in the elementary I'm not gonna go into as much depth with Edmentum, but, but I'll, I'll give you a bird's eye view of student performance. So this first view of, of the results is by national percentile ranking, so this is comparing our students to a cohort in the same grade at the end of last year, and this is just all student results compiled together. So one, I, I actually think that looking at our scores in terms of percentile view will make more sense later in the year, 'cause we can see how, how our students progressed in relation to other grades. So I prefer to look at, Edmentum offers proficiency interpretations for students for this point in the year, but it only offers those interpretations up through grade eight, it does not offer those interpretations for high school. So for grades three through six, in terms of the proficiency interpretations, Edmentum is telling us that 29% of the students who tested in math, tested in the proficient or above category, reading 36%, and language are 40%. In the elementary schools, only a very small number haven't tested, but the testing window, I believe, is still open till this Friday, so there's still an opportunity to catch some of those students. In grade seven through eight, in grade seven through eight, higher percentage of students have not yet tested. I've corresponded with OB Edmonds, and they're doing their best, but there's some chronic absentee, absenteeism issues that are affecting that. Lower, just as with Sback, lower percentage of students in seventh and eighth grade testing proficient than, than in the elementary grades. Again, not going to go through all of these numbers, but this, it was just how I investigated whether or not there was a discrepancy by socioeconomic status, for most grades, there was a discrepancy by socioeconomic status, with students not on free and reduced lunch outperforming students on free and reduced lunch by percentile. And the last chart that I'll show, I investigated four cohorts for Edmentum over time, because that, I understand, was a request. This is based on average score, and compares students in the same cohort who are on free and reduced lunch or not on free and reduced lunch. uh who are on free and reduced lunch or not on free and reduced lunch. And um, while the patterns vary a little bit according to the cohort, in general, across most of the test iterations that we've done so far, there's a significant gap uh with uh students um not on free and reduced lunch, represented in orange here as their average score, and students on free and reduced lunch represented in the light blue. Um, so for this particular cohort, in each testing iteration, there was a significant gap. Uh, quick takeaways, and then um I will um part or answer questions if there's time. Um, so um, uh, since, I'm, I'm trying to see if there's anything that I didn't just cover. I think I, I basically explained everything that's here. Um, so I'm not going to read it again, but it's, it's there for your reference if you would like. Um, I have linked uh at the end of this presentation, the full report. It's quite lengthy, but it gets into some more detail um and backs up some of the takeaways that I presented. I don't know how I did on the time, um, I can't actually see.
You did great, Jimmy.
Okay, awesome. Uh, I don't, I don't know if there's time for questions. If there are, if folks have any, that's great. And if not, folks can certainly reach out um to Tyler, Kristen, and, and I can do my best to answer them that way.
All right, so we'll open it up to questions.
I've, I got questions.
Oh, no. All right, anybody but them.
Don't read the full reports, Lisa, or Dr.
Right.
Just wondering if you can do that analysis by scale score rather than aggregating percentile ranks? That sounds kind of technical, but it makes a whole, huge amount of difference because percentiles do not have equal intervals in their scale. And so the difference between a one first percentile and a second percentile is very different from the forty-ninth and fiftieth, and it would change the trends. Um, the second thing I would ask about is what happened with that first slide in which the bottom fell out? And why, it's curious as to why the bottom would fall out for one grade level or for one seven? Can you put that one back up, your first one?
I'm sorry, I, I can't understand.
Can you put up the first? Can you put, go back to the, your first slide for the S-PAC? Are you going to get the S-PAC?
Yes.
The S-PAC.
Grade three, Jimmy.
Yeah.
Whoa, grade three?
I believe it's grade three.
Yep.
Oh, this, this one?
Nope.
No.
First one you showed.
It was like one of the first slides you had.
I think it's slide six.
There.
Back.
This one?
Nope, keep going.
One, one too far.
This is the earliest, okay.
Keep going.
This one?
Nope, keep going.
There are two more.
Draft.
Keep going.
It's the cohort.
Right there.
Cohort, okay.
What happened?
I'm sorry, is there a question?
So he, he wants to understand what happened. I mean, why did the, the, the class was doing really well for three, uh, three years, and then all of a sudden, it's this drastic drop in seventh grade, which might answer your question right there, seventh grade, but um.
But it.
I have a hypothesis, but.
Sure.
Notice that it tracks, except for that one.
Okay, what's your hypothesis?
My hypothesis is that um Otter Valley is still developing a culture that supports testing. I know that I had a fantastic conversation with the, the English department at OV at the end of last year, along with another coach. Um, and they had tons of great ideas for how they could um help to ensure that faculty and staff uh have consistent buy-in. Um, of course, now with the, the test, um, uh, whatever, the, the company that we're going to be, the vendor changing, you know, that'll be an adjustment for everyone. But um, I, I'm, I'm sure that it's the case, um, that there are there are a, a higher number of students in the upper grades who are going to test, uh, kind of follow the state trend of testing below, um, because there's some reason that's happening across the state. But I, I, I personally believe that the numbers are not reflective of the reality for Otter Valley students. I think that um, there's, there's some cultural changes that I think the current administrator is working very, very hard and doing a really good job so far. And after a couple of years um of him doing his thing, maybe we'll see some changes.
Yeah, if I can add to that, I mean, that is a major push for myself as well, is that um, you know, I, we see, I've seen in my past positions that, uh, especially at the upper levels, you see this as a compliance checkbox. We did it, we're good, we, we don't, we're not going, we're not going to look at the data results, we're not going to uh use that results for any kind of assessment change or instruction, instructional change. Um, that's a cultural shift that we really need to work on. And we know it, and myself and the building admin, admins know that. And um, you know, it's, I don't want to create, this is going to sound different. I don't want to create a testing, a, a culture of testing. I want to create a testing culture, if that makes sense. You know, we need to make sure that it's not the end-all, be-all of testing, but we need to make sure that we, kids know it's important and why we use it and why we do it, and we build it into our normal instruction, the results.
One additional point is that I did not attempt to control for things like, you know, some students transferred in, some students transferred out. So while I represent this as a cohort, um, I did not with the, you know, I did not, at the time that I had, I was, I wasn't sure the best way to approach it in a way that would be valid, and also, you know, just simply didn't have the time to say, to figure out if I should, like, only look at students that took each test and look at those, that more limited cohort. So that could have some effect on the trend. But I, I honestly don't think that it would make that much of a difference personally.
You're aggregating, you passed the ninety-five percent testing threshold, right?
We did not.
Not OV.
Not OV. Uh, the.
Oh.
That is where, I think we're right around eighty-five, eighty-eight percent from last year. Uh, and that is, again, another push of myself to be uh, upping the high ninety, ninety-five or, or greater.
Well, but as you have said, the, the attendance at OV last year was such a barrier.
And I would add that because Otter Valley, and I don't mean OBU, I mean Otter Valley's culture has been for years, um, that the, the tests don't mean anything. We don't get anything from that, all the way from administration down to students. Historically, our student, uh, our students who live above the poverty line, for instance, our students who are historically high achievers end up being the subgroup that more often than not opts out of the test.
The high achievers are opting out.
Uh-huh.
You would expect the low to be opting out.
It is not the case to opt out of the test. We've made it fairly cumbersome, right, like intentionally? Because if we don't get to ninety-five percent, we risk losing federal funds. Whether or not you agree in the test, we need kids to take the test so we can continue to fund our schools. Um, in addition, because people are looking at the scores, people look at, in the great schools, whether, again, you believe it or not, people look at how your schools do, they look at your test scores. We want people to believe in OBU schools. Um, so we don't want our highest achieving students to be opting out of the test. But those are, again, historically, the students who, we have teachers' kids opt out as well, um, who say, I don't need to do this, it doesn't mean anything for my ability to go to college, I'm not going to do this.
I'm just trying to understand this and why it is happening the way that it is.
People opting out of the tests?
Well.
We had a superintendent at one point that didn't think testing was a good idea, so he did not push it either.
And, and Otter Valley, Otter Valley used to get away with it, right? My first year, um, when I came on, Otter Valley's uh participation rate was well below fifty. We got a checkmark from the state that said, if you do not get to eighty-five percent or above, be prepared to lose federal funds. So then I descended as the director of curriculum, was like, what are we going to do here? Like, this is not, and then COVID hit, right? And so then COVID hit, the world shifted, and to be honest, kids weren't in school. Um, attendance was a huge issue. If you've got kids in school, you really wanted to prioritize them making connections, relationships, catching up on core content, right? So the first year of this, in twenty-one, we also didn't prioritize it as much as, we just want Padua in school, right? We don't care if Padua takes the S-PAC as much as we want Padua in school. So last year was the first year in four years that we really pushed it again. And again, I think the new administration will, will see some changes in the culture.
Have we got standard deviations or federal range ratios, do you know?
I'm not sure. I can, uh, if we do not, I'm sure I can have Jimmy run that for you.
Jimmy can get that for you.
But I will say the, uh, I have not looked at the full report he put together, because it was a hundred and one pages, uh, that's linked there. But if it's not there, we'll, we'll do it for it.
Yeah, I'm just trying to see if we do, if we spread out and that would allow us to look at the various subgroups and see where the problem is most prevalent. That's what I'm asking.
Sure, we can do that.
Other questions for Jimmy and Tyler? We definitely have our work cut out for us, but we knew that going in.
But it's doable.
Right.
It's doable.
So, cool. Well, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Thanks, Jimmy.
Thank you.
Okay, so it's eight o'clock. I am, actually, we have till eight fifteen, because we have a two-hour time limit. So we're going, ha ha. So um, here we go. So we do need to designate a visbit V-HI rep for the meeting on Thursday and Friday. Um, Derek is going to the meeting, Barbara's going to the meeting, and I'm going to the meeting. So I would um entertain a motion for either Derek or Barbara to be the V-HI visbit um proxy or whatever, uh, designate.
I'd make a motion that Barbara would be our V-HI, uh, visbit proxy vote in the upcoming meeting.
Okay. All right, so you got that? All right, all, um, any discussion? Are you okay with that? All right, I figured. All right, okay. Any discussion? Great. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Great, awesome. Thank you for that. Uh, let's see, the other piece of the puzzle for tonight was our global ends policy that has been revised. Tonight was supposed to be our second reading. Do you guys think we can get through this?
Sure.
Okay, then we're gonna, so I would like someone to make a motion to approve for the second reading, our global ends policies.
I move.
Okay, someone, one second?
A second.
Okay, so it was Barbara and then Jen. Okay, okay. Um, discussion regarding the new policies that we put forth or that you have there, that we discussed at our last.
Look at that alphabetical order. That's so nice.
Yes, sir, you, were you there?
I think, I was.
Okay, good.
I think we should add something in, unless it's elsewhere, but I think it would belong here, that is um something about uh student and staff, physical and emotional safety, which is not covered by these things, it's not a rubric of academic performance, but like uh, so as this is a spot that governs what the um superintendent has to do, unless there's another spot, but I don't think, I didn't see one, maybe I, I missed it. But there's nothing saying, like, the buildings have to be safe or the, like, teachers need to feel safe, or bus drivers need to, like.
Do you want to just?
Well, that's not a student outcome, so that generally wouldn't be necessarily in your global ends. It might be an executive limitation that you would say the superintendent shall not create a condition where teachers don't feel safe, kids don't feel safe, bus drivers don't feel safe.
Okay, right, yeah, and that's true. The global ends are supposed to be the outcome of their education. So this is what we want them to be able to be when they graduate or when they finish whatever part that they're at. But as far, but you bring up a good point. I don't think there is anything in our, our policies that talk about student safety and.
You can't meet those ends if you're.
Right, so we could bring that up in our next, when, um, when we talk about our next policy.
Add an executive.
We can add it, right, exactly.
Yes.
Yeah.
I can draft something.
Yeah. So is everybody in agreement with that?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, Devin, you have a question?
I do, I, uh, it looks great, but in, in the last line, it says benchmarks are to be reported out at second, sixth, eighth, and twelfth grade.
Oh, yeah.
Is that, that's part of it, I take it, right?
That's what?
That is part of the whole end goal on this.
Yeah, so what we meant by benchmarks was that we would be, it would be reported out to us at the end of second grade, end of sixth, end of eighth, and end of twelfth.
Got it.
So those are our four benchmarks.
So the only thing, I guess, it seems to me somewhere in here should be added is that if these, or is it just automatic? That um, if a child is not, or a student is not achieving these, there needs to be a program set up for them to be able to achieve that. I mean, that's the whole point of figuring out those benchmarks, to say they're not achieving these goals, so we need to have a program set up for something.
So that's the administration's job, that's why we would be, that's why they do all this data and, and whatnot, and that's why they do all of these assessment tools, so that if a student, they realize is not meeting one of those expectations, that we can provide supports. But that is, the support does its job.
If it's not in the policy, does she have to still do it? I mean, that's, I guess that's my question.
Well, so if, if I'm going out, if I'm reporting out on global citizenship and I'm recognizing that students at, say, the sixth grade window um, or the sixth grade benchmark are really struggling with that and/or we don't have measures that are actually um able to assess that, which is more likely, right, that some of these indicators, we're going to have to come back to you. But that's fine, my monitoring report will be honest and transparent and say, in progress, partially compliant, right? We know that we need to go back and develop now, since you've set global citizenship as a priority, we need to come up with a way for us to report out on that.
Yeah.
As long as, yeah, that was my only concern, is that we have to have, if it's not happening, or after.
If that isn't coming, if it isn't happening, it should come out in the monitoring report that it isn't happening.
Right.
Thank you.
Yeah, sure.
Kind of like just now.
It is, it isn't happening.
Exactly, right, sure.
You're not meeting our academic professionals.
Right. Any other discussions regarding these policy, global ends?
Just have a question about the benchmark line.
Yeah.
It's just kind of shoved in there. Do we need, it doesn't, it's not really falling under anything else? It seems like it needs to somehow fall under something? So like we have one point three, four, five, six, and then just staying in there?
Right, I think that was just because, well, as I recall from our last meeting, we wanted to make sure that she knew those were the benchmarks that we wanted. At, and so each one of those, we want benchmarks at those four grades.
Oh, it's not for formatting this, it should say like one point seven and then that line, or something to fit the format of the rest of it.
Or if we added it into one point zero and say, to be reported on.
Yeah, there you go.
Yeah, I suppose, it, what do you think?
I mean, I, I also thought it looked a little awkward sitting alone by itself.
That's why I asked if it was even part of it, because I was like, this is kind of floating there.
Like, does it, does it even belong, does it even belong in this particular part? Or does it belong somewhere else in terms of the?
I think it belongs there, because otherwise, she could give us benchmarks on first graders every time, and we wouldn't be able to say anything different, because the policy doesn't specifically state what we want benchmarks on. Yes, ma'am?
Yeah, I would say it probably could make sense to, at the end of one point zero, to say, to be reported out on in two, six, eight, and twelve.
Okay.
Something like that.
Okay. Everybody okay with that change? We need to have the two of you friendly amendment to amend your, to add that to it.
That's fine. I make a motion for a friendly movement.
Okay, so yes. She said yes to the friendly, they both said yes to the friendly. So the friendly amendment is to add that piece to the end, which is to the end of one point zero, that we would add the benchmarks of two, four, six, two, four, two, six, eighth, and twelfth grade.
Okay.
Okay? All right, anything else? Okay.
This is going to be a fixed benchmark at these particular grades, right?
We did that, because second grade is important, because that's when you're finishing learning how to read or should be finishing learning.
How do we know how high is high?
Hmm?
How do we know that that is at the right level?
Does that?
Like, how do we know what proficient looks like?
That the second or sixth grade benchmark is set at the right level.
Well, we use um standards that are aligned to the Common Core state standards, so that's what we'd be reporting out on, how our students do.
Oh, no, I think he's asking, like, why did we choose the?
Why those grades?
No, I thought he said, how do I know if the second grade benchmark is high enough?
Right.
Oh, I didn't hear that.
So it's Common Core.
I just want to know if it's right, not whether it's too high or too low. I just want to know if that is right.
I see. We're, we're using our state standards as the benchmark, which is what we use when we send out report cards as well.
And we're not meeting them already, so I think it's a good, a good benchmark.
Good point. Jeremy?
Um, sorry to be a stickler here.
That's all right.
Just sticking that sentence on the end of one point zero, I think also doesn't make sense.
Just sticking that sentence on the end of 1.0, I think also doesn't make sense. It would need something else added in about the 1.1 through 1.6, because those aren't mentioned at all in 1.1. So, it's saying that the benchmarks are being reported on these grades, but there's no ends related to that. It just feels like it needs another sentence saying something about, like, the ends in policy 1.1 through 1.6.
So, what would happen if below the actual global end, and before you get to 1.1 and all, you say, "We..." Something about, "The expectation is that benchmarks will be provided for grades 2, 6, 8, and 12 on the following..." What do you want to call those? On the following bullet points or following...
Ends.
Yeah, ends.
I'm just asking, what does everybody think?
Seems good.
You're okay with...
Some way to connect the benchmarks and the global ends, which are not done with just that sentence.
Right, okay. So, back to friendly amendments.
Yes.
You okay with that change?
Can you, I'm sorry, I'm looking for our own, I'm looking at our policies just because it's seeming kind of, it's still seeming kind of clunky to have it in there when it could be put somewhere else as a guiding.
So, the change was to do, to say, 1.0 global ends and then have that line?
No, my thought was that you have the big black portion that talks about, you know, and then underneath that, before you get to the orange part, you say, "The benchmarks of..."
The following benchmarks will be reported on.
The following benchmarks, right.
But the, for the, for the...
Global ends is supposed to be like a big kind of statement? I don't know, talking about benchmarks and reporting in your big global statement seems...
It could go in an executive limitation somewhere, but it's hard to...
I feel like it could be incorporated elsewhere in our policies, because it's not like we don't have guidance for all of these things elsewhere.
Right. Well, I mean, the reason that we put it there was because we wanted to make sure that those were the benchmarks that Kristin used. If you decide to not put it in there, then she gets to use whatever parameter she wants.
I mean, it does say, the district exists so that all enroll students. I mean, we're covering all students. We don't want just 2nd graders reported on, and we've said so by saying all, right?
Sure, but she could just say 12th graders, and that's all, you know.
But that's not all students.
What if I promise not to?
I know.
I mean, it just, it does seem...
All right, so here's what I'm going to do, because it's quarter after 8:00, and we've been here since 5:30. I'm tabling this until next time.
That's fine.
So, come up with a plan.
Appreciate you.
Okay? We're not done yet, though. I got one more thing.
Sorry to hold up on the friendly, but it's starting to...
Brett, you had emailed me and wanted to bring attention to something. I would like you to bring it up now about...
Yeah, I just wanted to recognize the Otter Valley golf team, executive state champ, so...
Yeah. And make sure that it's board-recognized. So, very cool, very exciting for those guys. I think it's all men, all boys, right? So, yes, very exciting, back-to-back titles.
Super exciting.
So, anything else that we need to recognize on the...
Yeah, recognize Jennifer for showing up for the honorary thing for the teachers and staff.
Oh, you're welcome.
Dr. Mathis also showed up.
That's right. Okay, anything else that we need to talk about before we leave tonight? I will bring up the fact that Brett also asked me in an email about preschool. We talked about it a little bit when we were over at Caverly. That is an RNESU issue, so RNESU will bring it up at some point within, I think we're going to be talking about November because we've talked about preschool anyway, so we will be having that discussion then, and we'll bring it back to Otter Valley, or you're more than welcome to come to that meeting and discuss, okay? Did I forget anything else? No? Okay. All right, so, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move.
You're skipping the executive session?
There is no executive session.
Okay.
I second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, goodbye.
Thank you, Mrs. Alexander.